The agenda has basically two items on it. Comments, input, and feedback. Well, we're going to be talking about comments and input on the foundational renovation plan budget. Looks like there's a second report from school personnel on the facility committee. And then prioritization of additional proposed improvements. On the agenda up there, it's got community comments at the end, however, as we're going along, what's the committee has talked about in particular, they, you know, I'm open to comments. You don't have to sign them or anything. Just wave your hand. I am going to try to get right here to be our timekeeper of three minutes. So the comments you're making, if you could please try to keep, make this succinct, I think three minutes gives people enough time to say what they need to say, but say it in a succinct way. So the first item is going to, is the first comments and input on the foundational renovation plan budget was done by the part of the committee, which is the building professionals plus me. Part of the reason for this is that we are, we have to operate by sunshine law, so we can only have a minority of the members of the committee talking outside of the public meetings. And, you know, part of the way we put the committee together with, you know, building professionals and then educators, you know, it's kind of natural in my mind when you're looking at building mechanical systems, et cetera, that the building professionals want to be able to interact amongst themselves about those kinds of issues, educational issues, the educators want to talk about. So that is pretty much how the committee has been functioning between meetings. So we put a document together providing an updated assessment of the process to this point from our perspective. And we, we had a, well, actually Dorothy and Scott Pfeiffer also in on a Zoom meeting that we did with Michael Murdock of Moats and THP, who is their subcontractor, Tim Bennett from THP. And we went over, we reviewed line by line, the budget and the different line items on the budget. That was their part of the budget. The part that Mike Bruceley did, we did not review that. So I just want to go over again because it seems like it's important to just remember what the charge of the committee was and the goal. The committee was created at the beginning of the new, of the new school board in last winter. And it was, it was created by the school board really in response to the fact that we had had a school levy bond that had failed and that two members who were elected to the school board had run on the idea of renovation and that this is something that the community had been asking to look at, a renovation plan for the last few years. So after the election, I talked to TJ first as, you know, the, as the experienced member of the school board about the idea of creating a facility committee and that it would be natural. And I asked that I could lead that as a person who was a proponent of a renovation plan. The school district agreed to this, the school board agreed to this. And I just want to point out that the goal was have a full understanding whether a comprehensive permanent improvement plan could match the facilities with the district's educational needs in an economically and environmentally sustainable way. And we said in this, Dorothy and I wrote this together, by comprehensive permanent improvement plan, we mean a plan of maintenance upgrades and capital projects for our facilities. Part of what we said we would do was put together a prioritized list of upgrades. We said the committee would help in the hiring of an architect and engineering resources, and then that the committee would interface and work with the professionals hired, providing information gathered and ongoing input. And then finally, I just want to point out, the board resolved to appoint people to the committee, both tradespeople and professionals with a relevant knowledge base regarding buildings and building systems and their maintenance and renovation. And also, the daily users, users, and they are our educators, of our current buildings to provide input regarding the facility's strengths, challenges, and needs for effective education of our children. So in our report today, we were going to do a power point, but that kind of fell to the wayside. I just want to point out a couple of things that we said. First, we want to make sure it's understood, our two school facilities are being sturdy and structurally sound. We felt like that was important to say. We also, are part of the committee anyway, that, so the people who put this report together were the building professionals and myself, so it was not the whole committee. We feel it's inaccurate to characterize the draft drawings and budget costs as a final or complete concept of our renovation plan, as it, as some people have been understanding it. These are drafts in need of further investigation. That was always the plan, that the committee, yes, would hire these professionals, but then the committee would be interfacing, working with them, vetting, and having critical conversations with them. And part of the reason that makes a lot of sense is like Craig Conrad, who worked for 27 years as our, as our maintenance supervisor and who continues to assist him from time to time when Craig Carter needs time off. So he's very knowledgeable of the systems, he knows a lot of the history of the systems. And we felt like that knowledge was very important because, you know, the maintenance plan advisors, they're coming in and they're looking at things, but they don't know that whole history. And, and I don't know that Craig Carter had a huge amount of time to go over all of that detail. Let's see. We had said we wanted plans at various price points. And that hasn't exactly happened. We kind of came up, we kind of ended up falling into a situation where we have what we, what Mike Bruceley called foundational renovation. And then he included the other items that were being talked about, particularly coming from our educators, in terms of what a renovation plan could look like. I wanted Mike to talk about, you know, this idea, the idea of various price points was something that Mike had recommended that we tried to come up with, some cost points that we thought we could be, that our community could support as a way to provide some structure to a plan that we would be trying to put together. But I'm going to let Mike talk a little bit about the various price points, the foundational, how it became, how the one section became called foundational renovations. And the idea that, as I said, all of those other issues beyond the foundational really have not been discussed by the committee or the community. It's just, when these were improvements that our administrative staff, working with Mike, looked at, it would be really great to be able to do for this.
Sure. So yes, I was hired to support the committee in, on the renovation plan options. And I wouldn't get too hung up on the word foundational, but the thought was that there would be a base amount of work that would address all the major problems with the existing building. So shell, roofing, walls, basery, windows, and all your interior systems, your mechanical butt hole plumbing systems. And then hit, what I've kind of heard is kind of critical issues like building security, creating secure vestibules, and kind of critical user, student issues like restrooms that are, you know. So those were formed around what I call the foundational plan, because if you do that, you could still do all these other, other things. It's kind of the, the foundation on which any plan could be built on. So for example, if you have an approved electrical service or new mechanical system sized for expansion, you can do a lot of things down the road that right now you can't do because these systems don't have that capacity. So that was the thought process. And really, this is the, you know, I'm here to provide information, not to recommend or, but just to bring my experience about what I've seen. The upside of a renovation plan is you can do it at various price points. So there can be a conversation around how much we will invest, what does that look like? Versus new building, which I know we're not talking about, you can't have to do a new building, you have to fully build a building completely. So the renovation option does give districts flexibility on how much they want to build through it. So the foundation plan is just that. And then the, the other projects came out of engagement I had with principals and your administrators on other parts and pieces of the plan that they would really like to look at. Fully renovating classrooms, fully renovating up through the second and third floors of the tower, renovating this floor of the building, replacing the modulars with new construction, adding multiple music for more spaces at both schools. So those pieces were, were added to that second column, and then it adds up to the total. And essentially, the, the total vision, what I was trying to do is say, can we put together a vision off paper that addresses nearly all of the expressed needs that I heard throughout the process? With one exception, which is the high school gym, right? That kind of could not accomplish that with this plan. But that was, that was the goal. So that, when you look at what's on the draft drawings from December 8th or 9th, that's essentially the total renovation plan. And then the way this was budgeted was a way to peel out what are the foundational pieces and what are the additional pieces that could be added on to that to get you to a total. So really, the goal was to provide a basis for conversation, for engagement, for the work by this committee to then wrestle with that, figure out where do you want to be and what wants to be in.
So I, I think I want to go over again what's, what's included in the foundational renovation. And I do want to say, a word, a phrase that's been, been used that I ended up stopping using after talking to some educators about it, was this phrase, "educational adequacy." And the idea that the foundational renovation plan was not about educational adequacy, but the other pieces were. After looking at it a bit, it's clear to me that a lot of the foundational items are about educational adequacy. I know Dorothy, early on, was, was emphasizing the importance of air quality in a school. And, you know, so when you think about the kind of HVAC and air exchange work that's going to be done in the foundational renovation plan, that is educational adequacy, that is an educational adequacy item. But anyway, so let me just go over again. It would re, so, a foundational renovation would replace all mechanical systems, including replacing all HVAC systems. It would add air conditioning to the high school gym. The plan also includes dedicated ventilation systems, meeting air exchange criteria as prescribed by the current Ohio Building Code. These improvements would resolve and address air quality and environmental comfort issues. The plan includes extensive renovations to restroom facilities that will also make them ADE compliant. All ceilings and lighting will be replaced, the PA and technology systems will be updated. I ended up asking Michael Murdock in an email, you know, what exactly does the technology improvements include? And it includes, it includes a lot. So according to Michael, they, it includes a new internet service to each building, significantly increased bandwidth, internet cable to each classroom, wireless routers in each classroom, hallways, audiovisual equipment, electronic boards, and teaching aids, charting, charging carts, and special power internet connections for updates, IT closets, new servers and switches, security cameras, card swipe system, intruder system, lock system, visitor badge system. It would also include some hardware, computer lab, 3D printers, simulators, et cetera. It just struck me that we're spending $650,000 on technology in Mills Lawn and $1 million in the middle high school. There's a lot involved there and we want to, and I wanted to make it, make sure that people were understanding what that would be involved. It will include an update of the electric system, we'll talk about that a little bit more here in a minute, where needed, and additional power outlets to meet classroom and workroom needs. It will replace roofs needing replacement and plan for the future needs of those currently not needing replacement. All single pane windows and those in poor condition in both facilities will be replaced with thermal insulated windows. All identified concrete basery and facade repairs are included in the plan. The foundational plan includes renovation at Mills Lawn and Trist to create a secure vestibule, an upgrade, and reconfiguration of offices, including the firm office, receptionist, and secretary offices, the principal and householder office, the clinic, and a special education flex space. It will also include associated bathrooms. The van trailer will be replaced with a new constructed van room. In the high school, the foundational plan will include additional new construction of a secure vestibule and opens an office suite for the receptionist, secretary, principal, assistant principal, conference room, and administrative storage work area. It will also include deep renovation to provide an office suite for a high school guidance office, psychologist, therapist, middle school guidance, special ed offices, and a clinical associated bathroom. And then I put in here that things that are not included, that we agree should be included would be replacing furniture that's in poor condition, flooring and window treatments such as lines and shades. There are, there may be other items currently in the second column of the initial report that need to be included in the list for foundational renovation. And I do want to say that as we've looked carefully, and of course, we've been hearing, you know, about the modular units or the shoebox, and we have, we believe the committee, the building professionals and I, who am not a building professional, that there may be a reuse of the units that could be of value to the district. But we recognize they're not ideal for classrooms. So what we put in our foundational budget does not include the need for the new construction of classrooms that would need to be built to replace those. That is a $2.7 million additional cost. However, if you go through the square footage costs that are associated with the modular, as well as other costs associated with the modular, the actual, and we would be reducing that if we were getting rid of the modulars, then the actual cost for that new, those new roofs would be something like $1.25 million, the difference in cost. So Jerry, so we've been, you know, after we talked with, in that Zoom conversation with Michael Murdock and Tim Bennett, and we've done other kinds of research, we had electricians for Dayton Bomb Electric, it was the owner plus the fellow who's like the head of their commercial division. They came and looked at our electrical system because Michael Murdock of Moats agreed that basically their look, they didn't open the panels because they're not electricians, so they didn't really have an in-depth look at our electric system. So, so we did have them come, we got input from them, we've talked to fire safety professionals, you know, about the issue of, you know, the, what would be necessary to ensure fire safety, which of course, everybody wants to be sure of. And so anyway, Jerry put together a spreadsheet looking at possible savings, although we do feel like we need more information in order to really be able to nail down some of these higher cost items by a little more assessment, that would cost a little bit more money. So I'll let Jerry take over.
Okay, well, first of all, as you mentioned, we at the school district hired a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, engineering consultant, Moats, and structural and building envelope professional, THP. And they were charged with doing a visual inspection of our facilities and coming up with recommendations for items where they feel needed attention. And the building professional part of this facilities committee, so the public knows what the qualifications of those folks are, I'm going to briefly introduce, due to the thought, already mentioned Craig and his association with the school over two decades. Myself, I'm a retired engineer. I spent my career in project management and facilities engineering. I retired from a firm after three decades of service with a group that designed industrial facilities projects of values, values up to $300 million. And our firm completed various disciplines, including foundation design, structural steel, reinforced concrete, mechanical systems, plumbing, electrical distribution, controls, and instrumentation. So I personally have some familiarity with all those fields. Also on our committee is Michael Slaughter, who's an electrical engineer, David Roche, who's a professional building inspector, and Richard Zalt, who has extensive experience in building and maintenance and has been a longtime volunteer with the Dell Springs School System. So I accepted, volunteered for this position for the purpose of vetting whatever recommendations were proposed by the mechanical and structural contractor. I had previously been concerned that evaluations done by the Ohio Philly Facility Construction Commission and Fanning Howley for the last levy attempt were not vetted, they were just taken as gospel. Unfortunately, some information which most likely needed to be transmitted to these folks had not been transmitted. So we attempted, we being the committee, attempted to bring the, our consultants up to speed the best we could, given the limited opportunity we'd had for interchange. So as I said, our consultants issued a report based on their visual inspections alone. And after going through their report, it appeared to the committee that there were various assumptions that were made that were incorrect, there were some mistakes made, and saw opportunities for savings. Keep in mind that the key word here is opportunity. The document which I'm referring to does not say that these are absolute savings. What, what the intent of this document is to identify potential savings if further investigative work is done. And I might start out with a couple of items. One is a comprehensive roof evaluation. The roofs on the school are various ages, some of the roofs are still under warranty and capable of being restored for a long life. That evaluation would cost approximately $5,000. Another item is evaluation of the condition of our hydronic heating piping. The only way to really do that is to extract what they refer to as coupons or samples of the piping and have them looked at in a laboratory situation by a metallurgist. Then the life of that piping can be reliably predicted. The other issue is underground piping. That can be evaluated by camera systems that are inserted into the underground piping for inspection purposes. All these three systems, which I mentioned, have been programmed in the estimate for total replacement, regardless of the condition that they're in. Another item which needs additional valuation is a follow-up electrical evaluation to determine what is actually in the buildings. This would be done by an electrical, licensed electrical contractor. All these items would come most likely at a cost of about $10,000 with the
Total.
Total.
Yeah.
Total. With the possibility of saving upwards of $8 million out of the estimate that was presented to us by the consultant. Now again, all these items are not, are, to be verified by additional work. We're not saying that this is fact, okay? As an example of some of the items that we called out was, one was committee has been encouraging our consultants to have a pre-planning meeting with the building inspector, or as they're referred to as the authority having jurisdiction. That's, that's, in our case, is a company called National Inspection Corporation, which handles Dell Springs building permits. That hasn't been done, but conversations that I've had with acquaintances that are fire safety and building inspection professionals have indicated that it is very unlikely that the AHJ will require our buildings to have a fire suppression system.
Which means sprinklers. It doesn't mean you don't
It means sprinklers in the building and a separate two-pump system which maintains pressure in the sprinkling system. It also comes with most likely an increase in the supply line size to the buildings to supply adequate water.
If it was needed for safety, you know, we would be totally for that. But one of the first reports we got from Moats, from Moats Engineering, was a, was included a lot of statistics about why, you know, upgrading our current systems without fire suppression is extremely safe. And there was, he had a lot of data to back that up. So we're just, you know, we want certainly what's here to, for the buildings to be very safe, for all those inside of the building, and to, you know, but the question is, you know, what's, what is really needed in terms of, for that safety?
A new fire alarm system, fire detection system is included in the foundational estimate. And then also, if you don't have a fire suppression system, there And then also, if you don't have a fire suppression system, there, there are fire resistant building items that need to be considered like fire doors, you know, material selections, those type of things, which will also be included in the foundational estimate. But the total fire protection package in the estimate for both buildings is almost a million dollars. So if that's a cost, it doesn't have to be incurred. That's an opportunity to pursue some of these other items which will add to the educational experience. Another item that was in the estimate which we took issue with was 83 exterior gym doors at a cost replacement, total replacement, at a total cost of $270,000. So we don't know where that came from. I, I challenged somebody to find 83 exterior gym doors in this high school. Another item that was in there which we took issue with was $110,000 for replacement of the ceiling in the gym, which doesn't have a ceiling. So that's just an example of some of the things that we found in the estimate. Trying to think if there's other things here that, you know, it's all, it's all in this spreadsheet. You know, many of the, there was a wholesale replacement of building windows and doors in the estimate. Building windows, most of the windows in our buildings, with the exception of the 1952 portion of Mills Lawn School are thermally insulated, watertight windows. There may be a few of those which maybe have broken the thermal seal or may possibly be leaking. So the assumption was made, subject to further inspection, that we would not be replacing all the windows in our buildings that have thermally insulated, watertight windows. Trying to think of, associated with that too, is that most of the exterior doors in our facilities have been replaced and are in fairly good operating condition. That also needs to be evaluated on an individual basis rather than planned for a wholesale replacement. So those are just the few items, you know, the point I want to make is the, what we're, the point of this document is to identify areas where there's possible savings that can be attributed to the tune of $8 million if there's further investigation done to confirm. I think that's all I have.
Craig, Michael, Richard, do any of you have anything to add?
I think you pretty much covered it, but on the electrical side, we had Motes look at it, we had an outside person take a look at it. Again, it's a cursory overlook and view of the main panels and the secondary panels. We kind of discussed maybe replacing the main panel. It is safe, but if it require further looking at, with some testing, shutting the power down, with a few switches, and then going on into the secondary panels. As far as replacing all the wire, that may not be necessary. We can all those lines out, verify that they're good, they're in conduit, they can continue to work. You don't need to pull all that wire out and start from zero. And that's pretty much where we stand on the electrical. Again, further, further assessment with a, with a check with equipment and a licensed electrician will give us more data on that.
The foundational cost included replacement of the, of the two main subjects.
Craig?
I guess I could speak specifically about the roofing. We have the 2002 additions, which at this point are just over 20 years old and they not need to be re-roofed, they could be restored. And I think possibly there's larger sections of the main building here and at Mills Lawn that also could have restoration and they could be brought back up to a 20-year warranty condition like you get with a complete tear-off and new roof. So the possibility of saving, and you're not, we're not saving money to be cheap, we're saving money because it doesn't need to be done. If your car needs a brake job, you don't go out and buy a new car. So if you don't need to do it, why should you spend money there? So that's what we're looking at, is if we can restore these roofs and get them up to like-new condition, then that's the way we can go and possibly save a lot more money to put into this other side of the bucket, you know, where we can get a lot more things that, that we need, you know, inside for educational reasons.
I was going to say, in terms of restoration, we were told that a restoration would cost less than half of a new tear-off rebuilt. So if you look at the cost on the original plan, we talked about the cost of roofs are very expensive. I mean, there's a big cost savings potentially there now. If there's roofs that are still under warranty, so they don't need to be replaced, but in a few years the warranty goes off, so there has to be planning done about, you don't just replace everything now because now's when we're going to do this big bomb and we're going to just do everything. If it doesn't need to be done, but we do have to then as a district plan for, you know, at the point when those things are needed, that you've got the monies to do it. So that's, that's another piece. If it isn't need to be done now, now when we went to Oakwood, they replaced 50% I think they said of their roof. Am I right about that? I'm pretty sure that's correct. When they did a big renovation. So I'm sure they're, they've got a plan, or when those other roofs do need to be replaced, which is going to be before the ones that they just replaced, you know, where's the money? So there, there's planning there that has to take place.
I guess there's one other thing I'd like to say about, you know, the only way to find out if these roofs can be restored is to have them evaluated. So, you know, we need to get a professional up there and they can do scans on the roof to find out exactly what conditions the roofs are in, every square inch. So they can go in and they can determine whether it is feasible or not feasible to restore the roof. And the criteria they use is if more than 25% of your insulation in your roof is wet, then they'll usually recommend a re-roof, tear it off, start from scratch. If less than 25% is wet, then typically they can restore the roof. Now it also has to do, they'll take four samples in certain places, because it also has to do with top layers that they put on. These are what we call built-up roofs, so there's different plies that go on top of each other. And what they'll do is they'll test those thicknesses to make sure that they're adequate to support a restoration, in which case if they are, then they're just fine with restoring and giving us back a warranty on it. So they're in like-new condition, they're...
I'd also like to add, in our conversations with Motes and THP, they felt that these additional investigations that we're talking about here were prudent measures.
Did you want to say anything, Richard? Because then it's definitely...
Well, I, I think I've essentially done the same things, is look down the list of, of recommended changes and then look at, in my case mostly at Mills Lawn and say, oh, we need to re-point all the bricks. No. The 2002 portion of the building, the brick is in perfect condition. There's not any indication of any problems at this point. And when I talked with, with the representative who looked at that, he said, oh, if you've got more information to give me, I'd like to have it. Okay? So their, their visual that they did was essentially to get the extent of the, of the building and what, you know, was it a brick building, was it a this building or that building? And then they just applied general terms to the whole building without looking at the different parts of the building. Did the same thing with, as we said, we talked about exterior doors. It didn't make any difference whether it was a brand-new door or an original door. All the doors needed to be replaced. And back and forth on that, oh, well, no, if these doors, you know, are of a certain age and they meet all the requirements and they're in good working order, they don't need to be replaced. So it's, it's just that fine tuning that we've been working on, other than this broad brush of just counting the doors and saying, you need this many new doors or this, this much new brick, whatever happened.
I just want to also add, I think people get a misrepresentation of renovation, especially if it's deep renovation. We have two examples of that. One is the Mills Lawn gym. Half of the Mills Lawn gym was built in 1952. And if you walk in there, unless you know what it used to look like, I don't think you can tell which side is new and which side is not new. Same here, behind the stage, there's two hallways that go to the outside and then there's a connecting corridor. There's two classrooms there that were renovated. And when that project was completed in 2002, you couldn't tell the difference between the new section and the renovated section because it was that nice. So renovation can really be really nice and it doesn't have to follow the same footprint that what you have or what you, you know, originally have, it doesn't have to be the same, is what I'm trying to say, you know, roundabout way. So, you know, you can, you can look at blueprints and drawings of where classrooms are now, but that doesn't necessarily mean if they're going deep renovation that that's where it's going to end up. They can move things based on teachers' needs or wants and renovation can really make a building look, look brand-new.
Mike, did you have any comments, or our comments?
No, I would just like to add one, one thing is that I think I'm recommending that the foundational plan include storm shelters at both sites. And that's because the moratorium ended on November 30th. And right now, law says if a public school district is going through a alteration renovation addition, particularly if we're talking about one that could be in the area magnitude of $25 million, that a storm shelter is required. So that's basically where we're at unless legislature adds a, extends a moratorium again or something like that. But, so right now for planning purposes, I think we need to plan on it. And what that would mean, and you haven't seen this on paper yet, is like, for example, in the foundational plan, we had the office addition. But next to the office addition, we could do a, an enlarged band room, even bigger than the band room that was originally envisioned, about 2,300 square feet, and build that as the storm shelter, because it has to be sized to handle all the students and all the teachers. So the band room that was in the foundational plan, or in the final plan, that was 2,100 square feet, is not quite big enough to house all of the students. So maybe that thing gets a little bigger and maybe it's recital or something like that. The same thing on Mills Lawn is, in the foundational plan, we had that one music room. Perhaps that music room grows in size to accommodate students and teachers and that is the storm shelter. So that's something that I would just recommend if, if this list is being considered, add, add those to the foundational plan.
What would be the cost?
At Mills Lawn, $1,740,000. And at middle school, high school, one, just call it $2 million. That's about 3,300, 3,330, 3,330 square feet at the high school. That's $600 a square foot, which is the $450 square foot base plus the $150 square foot hardening. And then at Mills Lawn, around 2,900 square feet, at $600 a square feet, square foot, $1,000.
I guess I have a question. So for a storm shelter, it's like, only square feet per person?
Sure. So you determine your occupants and it is five square feet per person is the law, but then you also have to enlarge the square footage by approximately 20% because let's say inside that band room, there's furniture, instruments or something like that, you have, you have to take that into consideration and upsize the square footage. We have to include restroom, toilets, lavatories, emergency power, the whole thing.
Okay, we're done with our presentation, so...
Question?
Yes.
Or a couple of questions?
Yeah.
The additional electrical contractor that inspected, and I assume that this was recommended by Motes, that they recommended this group or I didn't know about this happening?
No, it was, it was a contractor known by a member of the committee. It's a large electrical contractor, I think.
Did they, did they open the panels? Because in the presentation you say that...
They opened the main panel. They looked at, they looked at the main panel here in the high school. Want to be a tour or...
We looked at the fuses in the main panels. Yeah, we didn't open...
We didn't open the whole panel.
You didn't open the panel, okay.
They, they are saying that we should have a poster book, they were...
Replacement of that panel is included in the foundational...
But what I'm meaning is that both Motes and Boehm had a visual look at it. They are, they are visual. It's not like one got more of a look into it than the other. That's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted to determine here, is that, am I getting this right?
I think so. I wasn't involved when Motes was looking at it, but it was a visual.
Can I just ask one question about, are we still talking about the base project? Foundational is one project and then the rest is a separate?
I mean, the way I'm interfacing here is that the foundational, we all know that needs to be done. What's in the foundational renovation, basically is the high priorities and the necessary needs to be done no matter what. And then we said in the charge, we would have, basically we were calling permanent plans at different various price points. And the various price points thing got kind of lost in the shuffle. So, you know, part of the reason I put on the agenda tonight prioritization of the additional proposed improvements was because there was the idea, the charge asked for us to prioritize. Now, we know the foundational stuff is a priority, there's nothing to really talk about in terms of prioritization, I don't think. But the other items which were put on the list by the educate, our educator leadership, we don't feel like we're the ones to prioritize that. But the reason to do it is for the school, school board, who has to ultimately look at this information and with the community try to figure out what to do. So if several things on that second list get added, that would be, that would be the renovation plan if that's what the school board decided. But if there is something like, you know, we've been hearing about for years, the need for a theater. We know it's not in this plan, but we know that it is aspirational, with the terms of aspirational and enhancement, you know, as a way of trying to, you know, you have your foundational and you have an enhanced additional piece and then aspirational, is the idea that there's sometimes, there may be things like at Oakwood, they, they weren't able to do all the things they were able to do. And so those things, that is the thing, they gave up on doing them, I don't believe with my impression when they were there, but it's something that would come to the future.
Let me ask you again that question because this is where I'm confused too, and I'm going to direct it to you, Mike. Because I've heard you in the past saying that you were not recommending a several plan approach, you were recommending a one intervention approach, right? But then tonight you use language like later on, what to be done down the road. And so I'm trying to understand here, what the best approach and the most, the smartest approach is for our money? Are we looking at one intervention, one plan, or are we looking at a first plan that should be followed by another? Because this is really changing the conversation about how we're looking at that.
So my...
So my instincts tell me
Yeah.
that a foundational plan, or a, a plan that costs $25 million, is going to be a heavy lift. It's a heavy lift in any community, let alone Yellow Springs. So the, the thought of going out and doing a $25 million plan, but then kind of telling, hey, we're not done. We got another 15 that's going to be coming down the pipe. I think that would be a cha, that would be a challenge for any community kind of give that. So, so my recommendation, based on your past history, is that it would probably be a better use of all of your political energy to come up with the plan that kind of fixes things for the foreseeable future and not have to say, we got to come back in 15 years.
We're not talking about a phased-in plan. We're not talking about a multiple step plan. We're talking about one.
You could do it. But I think that's where it came from in my recommendation was based on everything I've seen you've gone through over the last five years, that I think you've got a shot, right? And, and in my view, make the most sense to try to tackle it in one shot.
Now, for clarification?
Yes.
We're talking about one plan, but the work will be phased over a period of time. You're not going to do everything in one year.
Well, you, my recommendation is one, essentially one contract
Yes.
for the two sites. And then they will be, it would be, in this case, a phased renovation over at least a 15-month period of time to do it. Yeah. But it would be phased in under one contract.
But you're not saying you've got these two lists, one's, you know, 25 or 23 million, the other one's whatever it is, 22 million or whatever. And you got to do all that. And that's what's, that was never your intention, was it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not here to say if you don't do the $15 million plan, you're missing it. Because I think if, if you just did the 25 million, I think you'd be getting a lot. But it's not really my job to say you have to, you know, the whole thing or not.
So I think we're ready to jump into our, to our response. And Mike, I respect you, but your argument is not in place to say that. And I think the whole plan, you know, I'm not sure where this notion that we're really satisfied with renovation came from. I think we've said all along, if it was renovation to like new, great. I said that in another meeting. So I'm not sure where that came from. You know, we've prepared remarks and by we, I mean myself, the treasurer, both of my principals, and the two teachers that sit on this group. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. It's in Word docs, there are copies. But I think I'm going to say again, and I, I'm willing to take criticism again, but I, I need to see our children's. And so I appreciate you saying the foundational stuff is really educational advocacy because we would have said that all along as well. And so hopefully, Judith, when you talk to educators, you talk to our educators. Because if not, that really is another way of devaluing the expertise.
You know, I tried to talk to our educators that aren't on the committee because I can't talk to the ones on the committee without violating sunshine.
You can talk to them.
I, no, you can't.
You talk to, you talk to all these people, you can talk to two people over here as well.
But, but when I tried to talk to a teacher, I was told as a school board member, that's not appropriate. So I've been talking to educators, but they're not been, met people who work at schools. And that's been my rationale.
So I, I've tried to define educational advocacy. You know, are we set up to really complete our mission? To do our mission as a school district? You know, these buildings when though were state-of-the-art. Times have changed. Education is different. And, and so it's everything. It's, we need a different serving area. We need a wider corridor. Two, we need spaces, learning stairs, or classrooms that can accommodate different furniture. You know, it, it's bigger than just, you know, we need more technology. I mean, all the technology, I want to make sure everyone understands that, that Moats quoted. We have that. We don't have a smart board in every room, but we have wireless routers and we have huge bandwidth. And we have all that. But what, what the educators, the teachers, and my principals, and I talked to Mike about, was in a renovation plan that is not a new build, in a renovation plan, how can we get close to meeting what we feel are our educational needs? They're not enhancements, they're not aspirations. Those are terms we have never used. That plan did it. Could we have had other things? Yes. But I think if that plan were actualized, everyone employed by the district would be, wow. So I'm confused where this, this anti-renovation piece has come from. But I'm, I'm going to move on in our document. I think, again, this is, we discussed this and this is our piece. We feel like we're, we have these two priorities. It's either about the money or it's about a future investment. And we have to decide what it's about. Because this investment, Mike is right in the sense that this is our, our one bite of the apple. Jay said that before. This is our one bite. So we better get what we need right now. So is it about the money in the short term? Is it about an investment in our children and our community in the long term? You know, these buildings, whatever we do, should be sufficient for our kindergarten students' grandchildren. That's what we need to think about. Because somebody thought about that 50 and 60 and 70 years ago. Somebody thought about that. I'm going to call on my colleagues to jump in.
I guess I'm confused because I came on this committee to look at the buildings.
Right.
And provide some expertise based on the Moats, the near quarantine and THP. And we've done that. We asked questions for clarifications from local parties. Got some back and forth feedback and found some cost savings for that part so that you can move forward and the school board can decide whatever they want to do, whatever that means, whether that's a full renovation, whatever, whatever that means. And I, I felt like that was what we were chartered to do. And that's what we've done, I believe. Unless you're thinking something different.
No, but I think they're.
Obviously, in that case, with the words and what's included, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I think the committee, Mike, you're right, has come up with what they were slated to do. Were, were there errors at 83 doors? Yes, clearly.
And if we didn't scrutinize that, we're going to do service to the community.
I, I, I understand that. But what the plan you have is, okay, so now we know it's not $50 million, it's 49 and a half. Or it's 41. I, I'm not disputing, Mike, that that was your charge. It certainly was. But I feel like the work is done. When I see then, an, an item that says now we need to prioritize the rest of the plan, then I'm thinking, that's something different. Because if we're asked to say, hey, what are your needs? And we were asked and we communicated. And so now to have to say, okay, of these needs, now we have to prioritize, that, I guess, is the piece that's confusing me.
Yeah, I would say that I, I keep getting confused by this foundational and additional because at the last meeting, we said phased approach isn't the word. We agreed to that. So at that point, to me, there is no foundational, there is no additional. It's one plan. It's total. Look at, and, and I understand how it's broken out, but that means that we're looking at the total plan of. And additional is scary because if you pass 25 million and you do this, and you say, we're going to get back to this in 10 years, we're still paying on 25, people are already upset about that. And then you're, if you don't pass in 10 years, then the work that you did 10 years prior is lost because you start getting into that, we're not maintaining, we're not doing everything that we need to be doing.
It's not the school board's decision.
We're not, we're not talking about it though. What we're talking about.
Right. And so what I would.
Talking about a single plan that the school board would approve that they feel that the community will support. That's a school board decision. We, we provided facts for the school board to this.
So I guess my question is, why, why does not the 50 million plan, the full renovation plan?
The charge, the charge said provide prioritized needs. That's what it says. If you look at the charge, actually, I haven't heard.
So.
So that's, so it, and so foundational.
You can criticize us all you want. But this is saying there is opportunity if there's further work done. We're not saying that's the final cause.
So in the interest of facts, I just, there is a lot of stuff in here that makes assumptions. And.
To be confirmed. To be confirmed by additional work.
So there's, there's things to me that seem like they're arbitrarily eliminated. And, and then there's a lot of guesswork in here. To me, and you know, I do appreciate the scrutiny of going through those. They, they said there's marginal errors to be expected. And potential savings are not the same thing as real savings. And when you go out for a project, first off, some of these tests, it's premature to do them. And this is something that we've discussed. It's premature to do them until we've funded the project. When the project is funded, when the project has been determined, then you do those investments to determine wholesale. That was actually one of the big differences between Mills Lawn and the high school was the amount of roof that was being anticipated to be replaced. There, there's a lot of things that, you know, so you got a budget for worst-case scenario. And when you get into a project, if you get a lot of good news, that's when you say the project came in under budget and that's great. That's when you can pay down the debt a little bit sooner. That's when you can lower the taxes a little bit sooner. But to, to, to cut them out of the budget without knowing, I mean, even if you core the roofs today, we're talking about a project that's not going to be funded until February of 2024. That's not going to be worked on until. And yes, I mean, so it's premature. You don't want to core the roofs two years. I mean, you're punching holes in the roof.
We're not punching holes in the roof.
That's what coring is.
It's non-destructive testing, we're not.
Okay.
Not core in the roof.
Yeah.
There's a disagreement.
I, I didn't say that you shouldn't do those tests, but I said, those are things that you wait until a project is funded and decided on. And when you get good news, then, then you, it loosens up your budget a little bit. But if you get bad news, it's good to have that money there for the bad news.
Let me pose a scenario to you, Jay. Let's say we decide to build a new school and it's going to be $50 million and it fails. The community won't support a $50 million new school, okay? The board needs to make a decision what they're going to ask the community to support. If the board feels that they feel that this community will support a $35 million project with the foundational and the, the optional items, that's the board's decision.
Correct.
The, the whole crux of the matter is, we know that there are some very serious needs for these schools. The question is, what is the community going to support? And that's a board decision. It's not, it's not this facilities committee's decision. The facilities committee's decision, uh, charge is to get accurate numbers to the board so they can make a decision. And the additional work helps get them accurate numbers.
Can I ask a question? Can, then, if, if, if you are going back to the charge of the committee and want to give a plan to the board at various price points, cannot one of those price points be Mike's complete plan?
It is. That's what the board decides what they want to do.
But it's not Mike's complete plan. It's a plan. It's a draft plan. I don't want to call that a complete plan because it was, we haven't even as a committee talked about that second list of things. The community hasn't had a chance to.
So I guess, I guess we're confusing community and committee. The community, there is, there will be ample opportunity for the community to weigh in. Because the community hasn't weighed in on, on the, what I would call the foundational pieces. So why they're going to weigh in at this point, which I just don't think is, we're there yet, on the educational pieces. But I think Mike's plan as presented, which included all of Moats, which we know is, is not, is not quite that amount, and THP. So in my mind, that's the complete plan. So when I say complete plan, that's what I'm referring to.
The, the charge said that we would prioritize needs. And we, maybe, if, if you think, if, if, I mean, we thought the educators would want to prioritize the.
We have.
So they're all, they're all priorities.
Absolutely.
Fine.
What was given, my understanding is what was given in those conversations to you, Mike, was, was the prioritized needs from the administrators and from the district leaders here.
Those are all priorities.
And, and so when I hear the word of optional, and then it's aspirational, I think it takes away from the work that the leaders and the administrators have done here to say those are the things that we need.
I just know that at Oakwood, there were a couple of things they planned to do. They didn't get to them because I'm assuming they had prioritized their needs. And those things were being listed and they ran out of money. So those are the things that they had done. I mean, I'm not sure. That's the way.
The school board said, this is how much money we got.
This is how much you got. And then when you ran out of money, then those last two things didn't get accomplished.
I think when we visited, you pointed out that there were new constructions that was going to be done at Oakwood that was going to be funded by an Alastine, is that right?
No, privately funded.
Privately funded, right? So the renovation plan at Oakwood was not that end-all project. There is private funding coming on top to do the things that were also important to the committee. And I think I want to underline this, that yes, Oakwood is an interesting comparison point, but it doesn't really quite apply to the situation in which we are here. And it would be really misleading or getting us off track if we wanted to stick with what Oakwood did. Because we didn't have the same starting point that we had. We didn't have, we don't have a private funding that they, that they have. And so those are different, but are very important. It would be misleading to keep pointing back to.
I don't think it's misleading, but I can acknowledge we disagree about whether it's relevant or not. I think it's relevant. You know, that's fine. We don't have to agree.
I'd like to address the, whether you do the testing now or you wait till after your funding. To me, it's like, you have to do the testing before so you know if, all that money you can save. So then you can come back and ask for less from the community. So if you know that you can save four or $5 million, then you can just lock that off of the 50 or whatever your, you're going to use. And then you can say, okay, it won't cost us that much. Now we can ask for less so that it's, it's much more conceivable that, that your levy will pass because you don't have to ask quite as much money.
Yeah, I just would be hesitant to use two-year-old data.
Well, if the, if the contractors that were, that were, that we would be using know what the situation is, they can, you know, they're professionals. They, that's what they do all the time. They would probably say, yes, you should be good for, you know, three years out to.
Yeah, I, it's just something that I would, I would wait on until a project is fully funded. Then that cost can be incurred by the project to, to do it. We're, we're $225,000 into facilities discussions without.
Talking on the school board, we're $50,000.
Yes. And, and I, I am, I am including.
I wasn't on that facility.
It's not an issue of assigning blame.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we're.
Blame me. We're $225,000 and we're a year in and we still feel the need to do one, two, three, four, I think four or five more assessments. I understand what you're saying, but I'm going to say, what happens when we do those and then we say, well, we need more assessments? Then we're going to be another 12 months out.
And, and it's kind of, I mean, to me, it's interesting that we're, we're cherry picking the news that we, that we want. We say the buildings are sturdy and structurally sound. This is what the Moats said. And then we're saying, well, they don't know what they're talking about with electrical panels. And they don't, so we're, we're cherry picking the news that we want.
They asked questions about their inspection and they did a visual.
They asked questions about their inspection, and they did a visual, we got a second video. We need to do some testing to verify the fuse boxes and the wiring thing. Stayed up solid, they didn't get.
Okay. Is there anything more you guys want to say than I was going to say, maybe citizens and the.
Can I say that first?
Yep.
I'm going to put my, I'm going to put my mom hat on, my teacher hat, my principal hat, every hat I wear, um, on for this. I feel like we are really talking in circles, and we are not, we, we are not coming to an agreement, which is understandable when you have 14 people around the table and, and a few people missing. To me, and maybe I'm wrong, it sounds like we are maybe at a point where we let the board decide. We have a, um, a plan that he did with a number, and then we have an option on the table where we have this foundational plan, and we need to decide if we're doing testing now or you just say, uh, hey, we came in under budget. And then we have the additional items, um, I don't like the term, but the additional items that the building experts have already prioritized. So why, why are we continuing to talk when it really sounds like, look, we have a plan, we have a plan where we can do the testing now, or we have a plan where we say, hey, we don't do the testing and we come under budget? But to me, it sounds like the committee has done a lot of work. I appreciate all the work that the building experts have done, I appreciate all of the work that the, the school experts have done, but it sounds like we're not really getting anywhere, and it might be time to let the board make that decision of when we do the testing and what is the price point they want to go with.
I agree.
And it goes out there.
Judith, I, I have some comments I'd like to go into with, and I have a couple of visual aids, if that's possible, to assist so that I don't have to say as much. It seems to me that we have had a lot of talk about, uh, our charge and, and what the point is, and, um, in thinking about this over the weekend, I decided it was an appropriate time to go back and look at the history of community involvement in this problem. And so the first thing I did was I looked up the charges of the 2017, 18 group and the 2020, 2020, whatever the, the middle one was, as well as ours. So this was the charge of the 2017, 2018 group, I'm not going to read it. Um, I like it, it's numbered, that, that goes well with my left brain style, it's numbered, it's, um, it's educationally sound, it starts with, you're going to determine what the educational needs are, we're going to look at the facility, we're going to make this assessment, we're going to make a recommendation to the board, the board's going to decide, we're going to share it with the community, there'll be lots of input, it'll be good. I like that. That failed, you know, I, I think that was done, but moving on to 2021, we had the community advisory team, same idea, and this was their charge, a little more concise, not numbered, it's just my personal thing, but again, it starts with the educational needs, look at the facilities conditions, develop an appropriate master plan. Again, I have no problem with any of that. Now let's look at ours. Now, the first thing I learned in studying systems analysis is that one of the most important things you do is you understand and then define the problem in a really clear way. The second thing I learned in system analysis is you cannot define a problem as the absence of your preferred solution. So I can't say, well, the problem, you know, the problem is that I, I don't have a super duper TV in my basement. That, that's not the problem. That's the absence of my preferred solution to the problem. I, I want to say that I have, um, it seems to be that the, there's a stark difference between this charge and the previous two. Previous two seem to be done in a fairly conventional style, as I pointed out, um, and here we are, being asked to kind of validate a, a solution to the problem. I, I just don't, I don't think that's, that's appropriate, um, and I don't think it's productive. We've talked a lot about what did the voters said, what did the voters say, what does the community want? And that's exactly what we should be talking about, um, because it is ultimately the voters who are going to make this decision. So we're doing no service to the Board of Education if we help them develop a plan that the voters won't approve, which is not. In, in 2019, the board commissioned a, a study, I believe they commissioned a study, there was a survey done after the 2018 vote, and they quantified reasons that people supported or opposed the levy, the, the issue. They got 150 responses, and I'm going to give you my quick top 10 list here. This was composed from the letters to the editor package that's in our, our document dump, as well as the, the survey results. Number one, to no surprise, it's too expensive, the affordability argument. That's a valid argument, no, no one in this room, I think, disagrees with that. Another one was that it's too expensive, not the affordability argument, but, well, we, we don't want to Taj Mahal, or, you know, we haven't spent the money we gave you previously well, it's not, other existing facilities haven't been maintained well, I, I just can't see myself spending money to throw, throw more money at you. Folks said, oh, the problem with it is it only addresses one building, it only looks at the high school and middle school, it doesn't say anything about Mills Lawn. Again, perfectly valid objection. A lot of folks said, well, it relies on the OFCC report, we don't like the OFCC, we don't believe they have credibility, um, we, we think there's a second opinion needed, we don't have any local input into that. I like all that. Another objection was, well, um, and this was really more in the 2021 vote, uh, it's a single K-12 campus, we don't like that idea. Or, or maybe we, we don't mind a K-12 campus if it's only out on Enin Road, or again, if it's only on, in the center of town, or the opposite. That's an issue. There is the sustainability argument, again, a completely value, valid argument that I understand and, and, and behind in my heart, that it's much better to renovate and repair than, than it is to throw stuff away and just build, build brand-new things. Then we get to the green space argument, which I love, no one in this room loves green space more than I do. But I'm sorry, the green space argument last time was a complete perversion of, of a social issue that had no business being part of the decision about what we do to solve the school facilities issue. They were completely conflated, and there was no reason for that. We can address the need for green space, we can make sure that people's love for the Mills Lawn green space is taken care of, and, and that doesn't need to be part of whether we, we should improve the school facilities or not. And then finally, we've got the mistrust of the Board of Education and/or the campaign committee, and this is where I, this is why I'm here. I desperately want to be part of the solution to this problem and not part of the problem Whether it was right or wrong, there was a perception that the board did not listen to people. That's all through the letters to the editor. Some people were offended by what they called scare tactics. There was the dreaded pamphlet with the, that folks thought was a scare tactic, and I'm not judging whether that, it was or not, people thought that. Some people were offended by the fact that money was spent on a PR firm to promote the second levy. I don't really get that problem, I guess I do, but that's routinely done everywhere that I know of. The complaint was made that the process was rushed in 2017. Here we are five years later, and we're still talking about it, so I, I don't know whether that's valid anymore, but it was a complaint that was made. And then, of course, we had all the misinformation, disinformation, social media disaster that was part of that. My, my point in, in all of this is that I would respectfully reject the idea that we can logically conclude that there was any single reason why the voters turned down the two school issues in 2018 and 2021. Uh, and, and I, I do not believe it's helpful for us to act like any of us know that it was, that there was. I think there were a lot of things at play, some of them maybe didn't deserve to be at play, and some of them certainly did, but we need to be able to compartmentalize a little bit and deal with this stuff separately, otherwise we end up exactly where Megan said we are, we're just talking in circles, um, we're, we're not being productive, um, and I just think we've got to, we've got to be better than that. I believe personally, I have been on record several occasions saying, I started this thinking that, that the way to go was to renovate Mills Lawn and to, and to do something different with the high school. That's the board's call to make. Uh, that is the board's call to make, and I'm, I'm for making, but I would love to see the board, whatever decision they make, I'd like, I would like to think that it was a unanimous decision that they pulled together on this. Not that, that we've got a 3-2 board, and we've got factions and all that kind of stuff. There are these kids out there, and they are the most treasured resource of this community, and we've got people that work in these facilities every day, whose life work, life's work is, is carried out in these places, and we owe them more than they're giving them. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. I want to tell.
So, so I just want to state a couple of things first. Um, you know, when, at the start of this, Judith and Dorothy, we met in my office, we were discussing my participation in this, and I told you at the very beginning that I was biased towards new facilities, that I would approach this with an open mind, and I would tell you after going through this process and talking with Mike about what deep renovation could be, I am 100% open to a renovation. So, so my mindset has changed, and, and I think there's even opportunity for more creative solutions that the board could pursue, that this community, that this committee was not charged with and has not touched, but I trust that the board could pursue those things. So, so my comments really are with the idea that I'm open to anything on the table, and I trust that we have a great board that will put forth the, the appropriate thing for the community. I also want to thank everybody for their time and passion on this committee. Um, you know, when I sit in meetings and, and I see people emotionally charged, I think that's actually a sign of health because you have the right people who are passionate about the conversation. And, and I, I value that back-and-forth banter, and I think it can be healthy in many cases. When, when I look at the plan here, my biggest push or encouragement is that we, we look in terms of, um, longevity and efficiency with, with the money we're spending. So, so if we can save a little bit of money now on, on windows, great, but where are we going to be in five years, or 10 years, or 20 years? And, and that's not to say to just wholesale replace everything, but I, I guess I encourage us to think about really big picture, if we're going to do a renovation, that renovation serves our kids and our community for, for 30 years or 40 years, that we're not coming back to, to taxpayers in 15 years saying, hey, we need more. Um, so, so whether that be a new build, whether that be deep renovation, whatever, that would be one of my, my pieces of encouragement. And then my second one is, I, I really have concern about the, the use of the terms foundational and additional, and I, I know that Mike did not mean anything negative when he came up with those terms, um, but I think the last couple bond issues have been hampered by misinformation. And I think when you use the term foundational, people latch on to that term, and they say, oh, anything beyond that is a luxury, and it's not necessary. And, and I don't think that's an accurate perception, and, and like, for example, in this case, the foundational was not even ADA compliant banter in this building. So, so like, I just, my, my push would be, we are, I think, as we, most of us agree, at a spot where it's time to hand this back over to the board, um, but, but I would encourage the board to make sure that, you know, we're looking at big picture, long-term, um, good use of taxpayers' money and, and doing something that does right by our kids for a long time.
I wanted to maybe be here. I know, I didn't want to say.
Okay, I just want to be able to hear from you both over here in the floor.
Okay. I wanted to ask, I know that you've come up with a plan here, and that you found redundancy, redundancy in the budget for us, and I appreciate that. I wanted to ask if we could add back, if we could add back all of the requests of administrators and teachers here, so all the ones that have been taken out. For instance, I'm thinking about the changes in the floor plan that we have at Mills Lawn that would allow for small group spaces to be existing in the building. I know that those have been taken out. Can we add back, uh, you know, the sufficient storm shelter so that we can take the pressure off those different pinch points that we have in the room? Can we add that back? So that would be a complete plan without taking into account the redundancy that they have had. So that would be, that's the plan that actually would be the most viable here. So that would not be that, that would not be the original 50 million, that would be without the redundancy that they found with the 83 exterior doors and so forth. I do, I have, I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant about some of the assumptions that were made there, you know, the 20% of the windows and the 50% of the plumbing. Like you say, we need proper test for that, but let's, we do, we, we have the duty of having a conservative budget that plans for the worst. I do think that this is our duty to the community so that we do not come back and do, say, actually, we need more money. So in terms of presenting a plan to the board, that would be, I think, the, the request that I have here is that we do that and we add all of those requests, educational requests and requests that are being taken out.
I've got one thing. So I was part of the task force, and that was actually 19 and 20, it was after the first failed levy. One of the things that came out of that was, we're all talking about one-time purchase, either renovation or a new build, but what came out of the task force was the need to increase our maintenance budget, to increase the, you're going to build a new one, you're going to renovate it, you still have to maintain it. And what we saw was the budget that, that the school district has to operate, maintenance of any level is not sufficient to meet it. So we're talking about a one-time deal, but I think there's also an increase in maintenance levy, or, I, I don't know, again, all the levies, but that was one of the biggest recommendations that came out of that. I agree that the, the terminology we're using for foundational, additional, we did, in the task force, we prioritized, we ended up with medium, high, and low, um, that didn't take away, some of the low stuff could be done when you're doing the medium or the high. You know, I, I, I think the foundational or the plan, the complete plan, like, I didn't like that terminology because that could mean two different things, right? One is, that's the entirety of the plan, it's a draft complete plan, not a done plan, right? So I think when you first did that, you sat down, we didn't do iterations on it, it was a one-time thing, and I think it's a valid starting point to look at, that incorporated the, the necessary, uh, funding systems that are required, as well as educational requirements from the community as well. So I, I want to make sure we don't lose the levies that are going to be required or, or the payment for future maintenance.
That's the PHP, the permanent improvement. Okay. Let's hear from those that will do. Abby and then John.
Well, it looks like John's been eager, so go ahead, John, and then I'll go after you.
It's just, the, your charge calls on you to present plans at various price points, and, um, you guys said that your, uh, needs, you've already prioritized them, and the founding, I mean, basically, I'm also going to dogpile on this term foundational. Obviously, what's, what's going to be presented to the board would be only complete and finished plans, um, so why, and if your, if your, uh, needs are already prioritized, then, uh, the, the one that you guys are calling complete could be one of the plans at one of the price points, and then you could cut off a couple of the low priority things, and that could be one, and then cut off a couple more low priority things, and then that could be another one, right? Like, boom. But they have different priorities. But they have different priorities, yes? They're not all the same priority level. But in any case, you're basically, it doesn't seem, the foundational plan is, talking about foundational, is only confusing the matter. The foundational asked elements is just the first step towards developing multiple complete plans at differing price points, clearly. I can't imagine any other reasonable way of doing it. Secondly, to say, to, and say-
We're timing you.
-potential savings is, to me, exceedingly unclear, and sort of burying the point, which is that the price tag that the board would be considering would be highly uncertain. To say, well, this plan that we're considering might cost between $34 and $42 million is like ridiculous, especially when you're considering that they're trying to, that they would be supposed to informally compare such a plan with building new. Obviously, a lot of the elements in the uncertain, in the potential savings are, would affect any plan, so it might not necessarily affect your relative comparison of renovation plans, but it would seriously inhibit your ability to compare with, to informally compare with building new. Clearly, you have to spend money to reduce that uncertainty. You can't have $8 million worth of uncertainty. He's not saying like, oh yeah, this is the case, and like, you know, it's definitely going to cost $8 million less. He's saying that he thinks it would cost $8 million less. We need to know. Like, if it's the worst-case scenario, we need to know that we're going to be spending that, and that could help, that could help inform and influence whether or not we want to buy new or not, right?
It's always the worst-case scenario.
It's, that's what we need to know. You can't-
Okay, I'm going to stop you, Abby, and I am going to do three minutes, so.
I will do my best, and these are complex issues. I want to start out by saying-
Abigail Cobb, introduce yourself.
I'm Abigail Cobb, and I am a grandparent of current students, and I served on the 2019 Facilities Committee with Chris Hamilton. And I want to go to something that Terry Holden said, which is, in 1952, there were community leaders, such as Wally Sykes, et cetera, who built schools that lasted, that lasted well. My husband and I were born in 1952, he went to kindergarten at Mills Lawn, and our oldest grandchild is graduating this year from the high school. So these buildings have been around a long time, they're foundational to the community. I served on the 2019 task force, and I want to tell you, I feel a little insulted, especially from you, Mr. Papania, when you question the OFCC assessment, the Fanning-Howey assessment, this is, the Motts assessment has been our third paid assessment, and the information that we have received has been very similar. I know that I supported the 2018 levy, and I supported the 2021 levy. When you talk about the community and what the community wants, over a third of us supported the new build levy last time. So be careful when you talk about what the community wants. I don't know, Mr. Papania, why I should trust you and this committee more than the OFCC, more than Fanning-Howey, more than the Motts assessment. That really concerns me. With the possible exception of yourself, it sounds like your professional background has to do with building facilities. No one else here has built buildings, let alone public buildings, and I'm really, I'm concerned that people want to be trusted here over the opinions of professionals. I want to say that what I'm not hearing in the so-called foundational plan is the fact that the roofs are, have a poor design. I've heard that said. Why should we replace and rebuild these roofs when the design is bad? What about the seventh and eighth grade shoebox? That's been a very emotional issue for more than five years. What about the ADA noncompliant high school music room? What about the kitchens? Our high school students have come before the board and said, we want to be able to eat better food, but without new kitchens, we can't have that. What about the sidewalk, right outside here where I walk from my car?
Abigail, your three minutes are up, so you can just finish up.
I'm going to finish. I didn't hear about the sidewalks being repaired. There's a lot that I'm not hearing, and I think that we're going to get to $50 million of renovation very soon with all these added issues. I don't understand why, knowing that, that the renovation is going to cost very similar to a new build, why we wouldn't choose a new build where the long-term cost will be less, having a single campus. If you read about K-12 education, there are so many benefits to it. I would like that addressed.
I'm going to catch you up. I'm sorry, but you-
I'm going to finish with one last statement, which is, I believe that the win-win solution here is a new build and also a preserved Mills Lawn, and I'd like to see community discussions facilitated by some of the communication professionals that we have in this community, Ari Associates with Jay Rothman, the Village Mediation. I'd like to see some real discussions facilitated, because like Mr. Hatter, I too would like to be really part of a solution. Thank you.
Mary Eevee.
Hi, Mary Eevee, community member. It's just, it's great to hear that you're almost finished, or finished, per how things are decided. It seems critical to me, I think many people in the community, to absolutely finish, if these assessments can help define what the numbers are, it seems critical to do these assessments for the relatively small amount of money that they are. So everyone, school board, superintendent, treasurer, teacher, staff, community, everybody can be a part of the next steps. Thank you, Facilities Committee. Thank you, all of you.
I don't know who you are, so if you'll introduce yourself.
My name is Beatrix Cuthous-Hunt. I also belong to the community. I just want to say bravo to the committee for all the work and all the findings. I saw some of it, I mean, in one of the reports, I think there were photographs of problems at Mills Lawn, and I thought everything was plausible, I mean, what was in these reports, and what needed to be done. And I'm glad for the findings of where to save money, because it is important to the community. And I wish I had such a maintenance committee for my house, which was probably built in 1850 or so, is on the first map of Yellow Springs, and still standing. It is standing, beside the, because it has always been added on to, and also because it was maintained, because the people who lived in there actually liked the building. And I attribute this to the fact that they kept their kids bigger. Because that's the concept of her second, because they're on a budget. Like, a lot of people will be, for the future here. Yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you for your work. Okay, keep adding.
I did catch your name.
My name is Beatrix Cuthous-Hunt, H-U-N-T.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I just want to say there-
Introduce yourself.
Sorry, Naomi Bonjourno. Sorry, did I cut in front of somebody? No. That there is an additional cost that I still haven't seen in here, which is what to do with the kids while we're renovating, and I really just want to make sure that that's not forgotten. It's a financial cost, it's also a huge emotional burden and a learning loss cost, which is not, you can't put that in the spreadsheet. And I guess I would also just throw out there that spending money on these additional assessments, it's not a, we do it or we don't do it, that's not the question. I think clearly, if renovation is the plan, we have to do it. It's just about when we do it. And I would, I would rather not see more money be put into assessments unless we decide that's what we're going to do, that renovation is what we're going to do. And I think that you could actually show, you know, for this line item, it's a range of this to this, this is our best, every, anytime you do a renovation, it's an estimate, right? I mean, that's what it is. And I always ask, if somebody, if a contractor's going to do work, I want the estimates to be high, because I don't want surprises. I would imagine, if I was a school board member, I would be comfortable looking at a list of items with details and a cost range, and say, this could cost this much, it could cost this much. If you decide that the high, that within that range is acceptable, based on whatever we think the community will support, which is incredibly amorphous, as Scott said, then you do the assessment. So I'm all for digging more in, I just don't know if we should be doing it now. And thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Matthew Kirk, I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Mills Lawn. And, you know, I've been following this committee as, you guys have been going through this process now for the third time, and I think we've missed some opportunities here. We seem to have, as Scott alluded to, have started this process with kind of a destination in mind, and have kind of been crafting our way towards that. And even now, after we have the plan, we didn't just present one comprehensive plan, we presented these two options, even though there's really not two options. So again, the product of the committee is already leading into this disinformation, like, channel, because we have not been able to unify even around a common language. I listened to you guys at the table arguing about what words mean, which means we don't have a common set of facts, right? Because everybody's interpreting things on their own. You know, what I do know is, as several people alluded to, is we're going to have to have a plan that will pass in the community. And again, part of that means that we have to have a common set of facts, a common narrative. And it also means, you know, that, I guess, you have to take your opportunities in life, and if you don't ask for things, you're never going to get them. So I don't really understand why you would possibly take a bare-bones approach to asking the community for the resources that the schools need. We've established what is needed. The educational team has said was needed, we've established the mechanical envelope needs are of the building. What we haven't necessarily established, and this is for the school board, is the political will to do it, but we know what needs done. And I guess if what needs done can't happen, you guys have done a lot of work towards the bare-bones plan, and if, you know, we can't get it together as a community, maybe that's our option of last resort. But why would we possibly go down that road to begin with? Start with, I guess it's aspirational to have media for schools, but do the aspirational thing then, Judith. Go for it. Let's just have like the same base level schools as everybody else. You talk about Oakwood, part of the reason Oakwood's able to do a renovation like they were able to do is because back when they built their building, they spent money on high-quality materials that are going to last a long time. That building's on the National Register of Historic Places. We didn't do that stuff. So what we need to do is get to that kind of standard, then maybe in the future, we could do that kind of plan. But we're not there. So, thank you for your time.
Introduce yourself.
Both of my kids graduated from Yellow Springs High School. I want to kind of pick up on what John was saying about these price points, and to me, where I see where that makes sense, is that it allows you all as a committee to say, here's Plan One, from that long list, it includes A, B, C, D. Here's Plan Two, it includes A, B, C, D, E, F. Here's Plan Three, it includes A to Z. Then the school board makes a decision. What kind of, what kind of total cost do they think that the community will be willing to accept? Because the bottom line is, this needs to get us to a levy that will pass. We have to have something that will pass, and it makes sense to me that looking at these different plans, even though we all may have a preference for one, gives us then the opportunity for the school board, who makes that decision, to talk about what's involved in each, what the trade-offs are, how that might compare to when we build, and make a decision about what levy they can put forward that they think will pass.
Thank you. Introduce yourself.
I'm Ashley Fuldrich, I'm a fifth-grade teacher, so I prefer, the third time speaking. My main number-one concern are my students and my children. I really could, I can handle a lot, I'm an adult. So we want to do renovations, that's fine, if that's what's best for our community, that will pass and will help our kids become better at everything they need. However, what I feel like we're not addressing is displacement of us for 12 to 15 months, and if construction goes like it did for when I did things to my house, way longer than that. You're talking about where we would end up, how much that costs, where we would have to move, go, move back, what will that do to our open-enrolled children? Will they want to be displaced and stay with our district? My open-enrolled children are just as important as the kids that live in this village. They are not the ones that we for some reason want to forget, or do all those things where, why are we building buildings for kids that don't look there? That's not true. Teachers love our open-enrolled kids just as much. But will we lose those kids when they're already coming from Dayton, Springfield, all those places? It's, I'm really passionate about it, I'm sorry. But that's my thing. We have to consider how much displacement will cost to our children, our finances, and our teachers, and will teachers stay? I will stay. I'm an invested member, my kids are here. But will that family stay that wants to not deal with that? Think about the kid who'll finish their senior year in a displaced environment. Think about that five- and six-year-old spending their kindergarten year on a bus for god knows how long, for a displaced environment. That's what you need to look at. Not us, that 17, 18-year-old and that five- and six-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Kathy, and I've attended K through 12. Kathy Adams. I attended K through 12 here, and our kids have too, and they've just graduated, the most recent, 2020. And I was so, so elated to hear Jack say that it changes mine about renovation. And I've been hearing from Mike about it, and he said it really looks like new, you know? And I think it's all about money, and I think it would be a great disservice to our community to go with all of this that you want. I hope that the school board will listen to these different price points and decide what the community can bear, because we only got 1,800 households. We're totally different than anyone else around. We have a lot of kids that are on the free and reduced lunch, and we have a lot of people that are living on the edge in this town, including seniors. And we do have a very high number of seniors as well. So this is a very different community, and you have to consider that when you're looking at how much you're asking the community to bear, because the main thing is, we want to get it passed. And I hope that the board will consider the great work that the Facilities Committee is doing to try to save our community money and serve the needs of all of our children and all of our staff, and make it a better environment for them educationally. And I appreciate what Scott said about that as well. And, oh, there's one other thing I was going to say, and I forget what it is right now. But thank you very much. I hope you listen.
Thank you. Is that everyone out there?
Oh, can I, I just remembered what it was. You know, I sat through the excruciating length of all those Zoom meetings that you all were in, and watched every minute of it. And they're not questioning, I didn't hear anyone on the Facilities Committee saying, oh, Motts, you're wrong, or THP, you're wrong, THK. They were just simply pointing out discrepancies and discussing it. And Motts and THP said they did make a few mistakes, and there's nothing wrong with that, nobody's perfect. And I think it is definitely worthwhile giving them a $10,000, I guess is what you're asking for these others, these other, that's a drop in the bucket when it comes to this school budget. And it could save us potentially way more than that, and then you might give a lot better chance of getting a levy passed. I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm Cecil Slaughter, I live in the village. I do have a high school student, but she does not attend here. My concern is for all the students. I think a reconstruction, because there is a reduced cost on some things, there are savings, it doesn't have to be cheap, it doesn't have to mean poor quality. I do agree with Ms. Fox that we are getting close to a point where we should present that to the board to let them make a decision. I would like to say, as far as Mr. Papania, I applaud all that you do. I really think the Facilities Committee has done a great job in a place of turmoil. Yellow Springs seems to thrive on that. But I applaud what you've done, the information that you've found. And lastly, when someone knows their subject, someone- knows their subject, someone knows their craft, it's okay to question. It's okay. If you know your subject and you know your craft, you defend what you have put down on paper. If it's incorrect, or it can be adjusted, then you go back to the table and you say, well, maybe we can make some adjustments, and still make it work for everybody. It doesn't have to be insulting, it doesn't have to be demeaning, it's a discussion. Smart people come to the table, they work together, they dialogue, and they come together with a solution with a greater good of everyone, which means the community, the parents, the children, and the teachers. That's all.
Okay, well, I feel like we're kind of done for the night.
I have a- A couple of real quick things. I guess I would just caution about just getting a levy that will pass, because if you just pass and we don't do enough, then we need more later on, and if we don't get more later on, what you just passed is going to be thrown away. And that's why I advocate for addressing all systems, like quality payment, that's why I advocate for the total plan. So it's more important than just passing a levy, it's passing a levy that sustains the foreseeable future. And we can get into this, but if it's just about cost, then I think, I think I know what I would do, but I think it's about more than just cost, so.
I do, I do want to just say finally, the building professionals and I think spending that extra money, that extra, doing those extra assessments will be important to the community. Now, I'm just finishing saying that, I hope not everybody agrees with that, I know the committee is not going to be in agreement, so we don't need to vote on it or anything, but we just think it makes sense that the community will want that. I know TJ, our president, our school board, is talking about having a listening session for the public, you know, for the school board to listen to the public, and we'll find out how important it is to people, because people, I'm sure, are going to be aware of this conversation. I guess, you know, there's nobody saying it has to happen tomorrow, but I, that is our feeling, is that it would make sense to go forward with those assessments. I wasn't hearing to Ryan, because I think you wanted to say something? Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. Ryan, did you want to say? Anything last? Is there anything last, anything anybody needs to say or call it?
I'll take the last minute. Something I'd like to point out is that our schools, our buildings, our educational programs have never been static. Every one of these buildings that we're talking about have been changed multiple times since they were built. They have been remodeled, they've been added to, they've been subtracted from, we've built buildings and sold them. We've done a lot of different things. We're not going to find the perfect solution for the next X number of years, okay? We're going to make improvements, and we're, but we have to know that it won't be the be-all, end-all. It will not be. The needs, we don't know, we talk about the educational needs of today, okay? We don't know what the educational needs of tomorrow are. And yes, we need to meet the educational needs of today, but we also have to realize that what we're doing is an unbuilding process. So there's the maintenance, there's flexibility in what we build, so that we can change it when we need to. This, this building has had rooms opened up, closed back up, cafeterias enlarged, decreased, kitchens enlarged, decreased. We keep changing our minds about what we want, and we have to understand that. So a certain amount of realization that no matter what, we can gather all the information we can gather, but we all are going to have to have some flexibility, because none of us know exactly what it is.
Thank you, Richard. All right, if everybody's set, we'll hopefully be doing that, and thank you very much for everybody's participation. Good evening, folks out there. Thank you.